I'm going to call to order this meeting in Monroe County Board of Commissioners. It is Thursday, October 9th. And joined here by Commissioner Madeira. I'm Commissioner Thomas. And we're waiting to see if Commissioner Jones will join us via Teams. And we'll begin with our public statement. We, the Monroe County Board of Commissioners, renew our commitment to welcome and protect the rights of all people regardless of age, race, color, creed, disability, sexual orientation, gender, gender identity, marital status, economic status, and national origin. And we affirm the right of every person to live peacefully and without fear. And we will fight and resist at every step discrimination and harmful policies, whatever their source. We also stand in support of our public school systems, both RBB and MCCSC. And we will now move on to our department updates. Ms. Kelly?
Good morning, Commissioners. According to the Indiana Department of Health Dashboard, emergency department visits for COVID-like illness have decreased and wastewater concentrations are decreasing as well. Flu activity across the state is minimal. The CDC recommends an annual flu vaccine for all people six months and older. And the community health clinic at 333 East Miller Drive has vaccines available. You can call 812-353-3244 for more information or for an appointment.
All right. Thank you so much. Comments or questions, Commissioner Madeira?
I have none. Thank you so much for the update.
Thank you. Okay. Any other departments have an update for us? Seeing none, we'll move on to our next agenda item, which is public comment. This is for general public comment, for items not on our agenda. Commenters are asked to provide your name and county of residence and to limit your commentary to three minutes. Does anybody wish to offer public comment? Can raise your hand on Teams or come to the podium, please. Come to the podium.
My name is Molly Redeki. I just wanted to publicly thank Commissioner Maderas for helping me with my stormwater issue and sewage issue. We've come to agreement with South Central Sewage District in Bynum Phanum. We have the tools that will work now, which is a backflow device and a backflow valve that will keep me from flooding. With that said, Steinsville has a unique infrastructure and needs help. And so I have reached out to the Center for Rural Engagement. I did put in a grant, it's not a grant application, but an application for partnership for the sustainable Hoosier communities. I don't know if we'll get it or not, but it's a step in the right direction. They also have tremendous resources. And one of the resources they recently gave me was the Regional Development Authority. And I will be writing them a letter of inquiry for a development plan. And the person who really need to get involved in this is Bruce Payton, who works for Hanson Professional Services. It's a civil engineering service. And I just want to put that name in your head, Bruce Payton. He was born in Steinsville. He remembers when there was a train coming through, and he can give us the right plan for Steinsville. Also, with that said, if you haven't been out to Steinsville, it's the Hilli Hundred on Saturday, and the Mercantile is a great place to watch the Hilli Hundred come through.
Thank you. I'm glad things worked out. I know we did some ARPA funding related to the sewage issue, septic issue, and I know it is unique. Thank you.
Thank you.
Anyone else have any public comments to offer? Can you raise your hand on Teams or come to the podium? We have been joined by Commissioner Jones. Welcome. Yay.
Hello. Nice to be here.
Great to see you, as always. We are now on to the next agenda item, please.
I would like to move approval of the minutes for October 2nd, 2025.
I will second that. Any comments, corrections, edits?
No, I already sent them in.
Great. Thank you so much. Mr. Cockrell, will you please call the roll on approval of the minutes for October 2nd, 2025?
Commissioner Thomas?
Yes.
Commissioner Jones?
I'm staying.
Commissioner Madeira?
Yes.
Motion is approved, 2 to 0 with one abstention.
All right. Thank you so much. Next item, please.
I would like to move approval of the claims docket for accounts payable for October 9th, 2025.
I will second that. Ms. Moser, or?
Good morning, Commissioners. The accounts payable claims docket for October 9th, 2025 totals $1,534,735.75. This includes all emergency claims and adjustments.
All right. Thank you so much. Comments or questions? Commissioner Jones?
No, I don't.
Commissioner Vera?
Nope, I have none. Thank you.
All right. Thank you so much. Let's see if there's, I don't either, so let's see if there's any public comment on this item. You can raise your hand on Teams or come to the podium here in the NatU Hill Room. Seeing none, Mr. Cockrell, will you please call the roll on approval of claims docket accounts payable October 9th, 2025?
Commissioner Thomas?
Yes.
Commissioner Jones?
Yes.
Commissioner Madeira?
Yes.
Motion is approved, 3 to 0.
All right. Thank you so much. We did not receive reports this week, but we will now move on to new business, please.
I would like to move approval for Taylor Concrete Services, Inc. to repair a damaged sidewalk at the health building. Fund name 2021 GeoBond, fund number 4814, and the amount of $7,500.
I will second that. Mr. Kreider?
Good morning, Commissioners. Richard Kreider, Monroe County Building and Fleet. This request is to accept the proposal submitted by Taylor Concrete Services, Inc. in the amount of $7,500 to remove and replace the damaged sidewalk and curbs leading to the northeast accessible entrance at the health building.
All right. Thank you so much. Comments or questions, Commissioner Madeira?
No. This sounds absolutely critical. I know that we're doing a lot of work on the health building, and this will no doubt help us round out that project.
Commissioner Jones?
Yeah, this sounds needed. I know it is needed.
I absolutely agree. Thank you for working on this. Any public comment on this item? All right. Seeing none, Mr. Cockrell, will you please call the roll on the Taylor Concrete Services, Inc. agreement to repair damaged sidewalk at the health building?
Commissioner Thomas?
Yes.
Commissioner Jones?
Yes.
Commissioner Madeira?
Yes.
Motion is approved, 3 to 0.
Thank you so much. All right. Next item, please.
I would like to move approval for Eagleview Master Services Agreement for reassessment, I'm sorry, fund name reassessment, fund number 1224, in the amount of $450,006.06 over six years.
I will second that. Assessor Sharp, good morning.
Good morning, Commissioners. Thank you very much for letting us come up tonight, or today. This is our pictometry product, the Eagleview. If you've all been on GIS in the last, Lisa and I were just talking, we can't really remember when we started this project, probably a good 20 years ago. And it's the background, it's the background for everything that we do in my office and a lot of others' offices. I'm sure if John was here with the GIS, you know, he would be saying, it's great. I'm so excited about this contract because Dave Askins just asked me, I don't think he believed when he read the contract, that we're going to one-inch pixels, we're going to go down to one inch. When we first started this, I'm pretty sure they were three inches when we first started. You know, you could hardly see anything, it was out there. Then I think we went to two inches, and now with the cost of this kind of stuff, you know, all of this, you know, the old Apple computer probably, you know, would fit in this room, and it was a million dollars, and now look what you get them on your phone. This happens to everything, and this has happened to this product. So we're going to go to the one-inch pixel with your approval, and it'll start, they'll start flying over next spring before the trees come up and come out. So that's the whole contract, and it did raise a little bit. Of course, now we're going to the one-inch pixels. The last contract that we signed, it was at $63,519 a year, and now we're going up to $75,000, which for what we're going to be getting here, I think it is well worth it, or I wouldn't have agreed to this. I've seen it, it's been demonstrated, other people already have it. Lisa reminded me when we first got into this, it's been a while, the city had their own, they were part of us, but they had a one-inch pixel for one year, and we only had the three because we're the county. But what's happened, since we started this, you know what's happened in this county as well as I do. Look at the development. And this pictometry is another tool in our toolbox and everybody else's that works in the county and the public. They use this tool like you cannot believe, every appeal I have, they've used the tools that we have, which is fine, that's why we do this. But I think this one inch is going to be so exciting when it finally comes in. I said something to Dave, and he thought it was kind of creepy, but when we first started this, we always told people, don't go outside if you don't want your picture taken. But some of the things that we've seen over the years, there was somebody playing tennis in someplace, and when they went over, they got the shot, and you saw the tennis ball. And there's been fun things like that. So, you know, it's going to be one inch, so you're going to be seeing a lot more stuff. So stay in the house if you don't want to be seen. I'll try to tell people when it happens that they're going to fly over. But I'm excited about this. I'm asking, I'm asking for your approval on this, and I know you probably have questions.
Thank you so much. Comments or questions, Commissioner Jones?
Yeah, this sounds very exciting. I know it'll make a big difference for a whole lot of people.
Commissioner Madeira?
I was just curious, in general, you know, what does, what does the flyovers help to accomplish for the assessor's office?
Well, that's the whole background of what we do. When you pull up a parcel, you can see everything. And this is part of our GIS, this tags, this goes into the GIS. So this development, we're out in the field, I have people in the field all the time, we're out in the field, but with development, and not everybody gets permits, maybe. And so when we're analyzing everything, and we do this continuously, we can completely go around a house and around the property, and you can see so much. And appeals where it really helps is, you know, you're trying to, you're talking to the customer, the taxpayer, and we're talking about everything in the yard and barns and all of this kind of stuff. It just makes it so much easier for everybody to see it. But just as I was leaving, one of my field people we're talking was telling us that we just had a fire in a barn, so we're going to take it off the rolls. We can, we go out, we look at this, but now we won't be able to see it today, but we can see the barn that they're talking about, and we'll just take that off, and then the next time we're in the field, then when I say "we," it's me and two of my staff, and we'll go out and make sure that it is destroyed. And that was a barn, ungodly, it's a house, but no one was hurt in the barn. But we do that for everything. So you can really pinpoint, because when you're out in the field, things aren't marked real well sometimes. And so we look in, and then we have everything on our phones, just like everybody else does. So we're out in the field, we can pull up stuff, and we do it all the time. This is the background and the basis for everything that we do. The tool in our toolbox is so important.
Yep, yep. I thought it might be really important for the public just to know how critical it is. It's really the backbone of the system. And it plays an important safety role, too, so that you guys know what to expect when you go out in the field.
Hopefully, yeah. And, but it's, the public uses it.
Yes.
They, I think everybody in Monroe County and out of Monroe County uses this. And it's free. And that was the commitment we made to the public when we started this, that we wouldn't charge. And some counties charge.
Wow.
Well, it's money. And as things get tight, but the public paid for this, so we shouldn't be ever thinking that.
Exactly. If Askins is involved, it's not going to be Eagleview, though, it's going to be Hawkview.
Please, no. I'm having enough trouble. I'm having enough trouble remembering Eagleviews sometimes, but yeah, Eagleview.
I think I was most impressed with the penny a year additional, the 0.6, the 0.6 cents over six years, so it's kind of funny. No, I, just for clarification, on our sheet, the third flight is spring of 2030. It says Flight 2, Flight 2, but it's, Flight 3 is 2030.
Every two years?
Yeah.
Yeah, they do it.
That's the third flight. Now, the reason we pay per year, even though they don't fly every year, is because they house the data.
Yes, and even though they're not flying every year, it's completely, I don't know how to explain this, so much new stuff is happening all the time, so they're having to go in and change things, just like we do. So it's an ongoing thing. I was talking to one of the counties, and it had to be a very rich county, I don't know who that is in the state of Indiana, but it was someone that was, I think it was Hamilton, that was, I think they're having to relook at that because they're in the same crisis everybody else is. But they were going to go to every year flyover because it's the development that's happening. And they have tons of development up there, if you've ever been up there. We're doing the same thing here, and that's why we went to more flights. It's the development out there. And I'm not going to go, as, who knows? Maybe we'll get rich again, the state of Indiana, the world. It's not going to ever be, while I'm here, I don't think we can ever go, and we don't need it. The two years is working beautifully for us. And so right now, let's just go to two. It's never going to get, I wouldn't think it's going to get closer than one inch. Who knows? Technology changes.
Yeah. I think the one thing that we're missing, and it's not your department, but I think the one thing we're still missing are accurate property lines on the GIS, and that it drives us nuts on the planning commission as commissioners. For the residents, it's really terrible because some people don't know and they rely on it. And I don't know if there's anything that could be done about that, but...
We're going to really have to get rich to fix that.
Okay.
It's cost. We've talked about this from day one. And there is a thing down at the bottom when you're looking at this, and I'm not even going to say what I really wanted to say down there, but people don't pay attention. And then they come in and yell at us in hearings, "Well, look at this property line." And I'm like, guys, this is just for you to look at, this is not a legal document, period. And people wanted to act like a survey. I would love for it to act like a survey.
Yeah.
When you guys come up with that kind of money, then tell me about it, and I'll be the first to have my lines fixed on my house. We have houses that aren't even in, on a way out there. There's one, it was the people that started our GIS, 39 degrees north. One of the owners, his house was way down here, two lots over, not in his lot. Those lines were so off. And we talked about and talked about, and there was no way of fixing it without major money, so much money. So that's why the taxpayers, the customers out there, need to understand, this is a phenomenal tool, but it's, it's not perfect. It's not a, it is not a...
It is not a survey.
It's not a survey. And you and somebody that's on the planning commission and all of that kind of stuff really understands that.
Yeah, yeah. Excellent. Wow, thank you. Good to have that edification for the public. All right. Let's see if there are any members of the public who wish to comment on this item. You can raise your hand on Teams or come to the podium. All right. Seeing none, Mr. Cockrell, will you please call the roll on the Eagleview Master Service Agreement?
Commissioner Thomas?
Yes.
Commissioner Jones?
Yes.
Commissioner Madeira?
Yes.
Motion is approved, 3 to 0.
Thank you so much, Commissioners.
Thank you. All right. Next item, please.
I'd like to move to approve the Cars Farm Park easements to Duke Energy.
Second, Ms. Webber.
Duke Energy is requiring two easements on Cars Farm Parks so we can have electricity at our new athletic complex lighting system. County legal has reviewed this, and these easements will produce, will be no problem for us.
Okay.
And oh, yes, I need to have, if you approve it, I need to have it signed as fast as possible because they will not schedule the work until they get their payment and they get their easement.
We know how the utility companies are. Very, very happy to oblige. Okay. Let's see if there are any comments or questions.
Commissioner Madeira?
No, they're very sparky.
Commissioner Jones, comments or questions?
No, I don't.
All right. I don't either. And let's see what we can do about getting this signed ASAP. Any public comment on this? You can raise your hand on Teams or come to the podium. So exciting, getting close to the final days here. All right. Seeing none, Mr. Cockrell, will you please call the roll on the Cars Farm Park easements to Duke Energy?
Commissioner Thomas?
Yes.
Commissioner Jones?
Yes.
Commissioner Madeira?
Yes.
Motion is approved, 3 to 0.
Thank you.
Thank you. All right. Next item, please.
I would like to move to approve ordinance 2025-28, amend Monroe County Code Chapter 341 Retail Food Establishment Sanitation Requirements.
I will second that. Mr. Kozemka, good morning.
Good morning, Commissioners. In April, the Foods Indiana Administrative Code 410 IAC 7-26 was adopted. We've been working with county legal to update the retail food establishment ordinance. The major change is the way we cite violations. It's no longer critical and non-critical, it's now a core violation that regards to general sanitation and then a priority foundation, possible result of food safety, and then also a priority violation directly linked to a foodborne illness. And also, we included language in there to include, we're no longer pen-on-paper inspections, we're now digital.
Ooh, fancy. All right. Comments or questions, Commissioner Jones?
No, I don't.
Commissioner Madeira?
Sounds like this will be much more efficient.
Yeah. Really good. All right. I don't have any questions either. Let's see if there's any public comment on this item. Raise your hand on Teams or come to the podium. Seeing none, Mr. Cockrell, will you please call the roll on ordinance 2025-28?
Commissioner Thomas?
Yes.
Commissioner Jones?
Yes.
Commissioner Madeira?
Yes.
Motion is approved, 3 to 0.
All right. Thank you.
Thank you. Have a good morning.
You, too.
Next item, please.
I would like to move to approve Resolution 2025-43, Commissioners' authority to sign approved documents.
Second, Mr. Cockrell.
Yes, from time to time, and I think the easement we just approved is one of those. We have documents that are signed by one commissioner, but they reflect a decision by the entire board. I know at least some of the, I think Indot in particular likes to have this documentation for when they get their grant agreements. And so this is just saying that if something was approved at a public meeting of the Board of Commissioners at a public vote, that any of the commissioners can sign the document to demonstrate authority that it was approved.
All right. Thank you. All right. Comments or questions, Commissioner Madeira?
No, this seems very efficient. We've already approved, yeah.
Something's been approved.
Absolutely, yes.
Commissioner Jones, comments or questions?
Yes, makes sense.
It doesn't... Let's see if there's any public comment on this item. You can raise your hand on Teams or come to the podium. Seeing none, Mr. Cockrell, will you please call the roll on Resolution 2025-43?
Commissioner Thomas?
Yes.
Commissioner Jones?
Yes.
Commissioner Madeira?
Yes.
Motion is approved, 3 to 0.
Thank you. Next item, please.
I would like to move approval for the MOU with the Indiana Cave Survey Incorporated.
I will second that. Ms. Ridge?
Good morning. So this was presented to the Stormwater Board on October 1st and was approved. It's basically a database sharing with the Indiana Cave Survey. They're going to be collecting, compiling, and data for information concerning cave and car features in the state of Indiana. So it'll be up to our staff when they come across a car feature, they'll have limited access to be able to add this to that database. There's no cost.
Excellent. All right. Comments or questions, Commissioner Jones?
Yeah, this is definitely a good thing. The more we know about cars, the better.
Commissioner Madeira, comments or questions?
Nope, just critical for both, I think, bodies in protecting these valuable resources.
Yeah. And we did hear this at the Stormwater Meeting as well, and it was approved there by unanimous vote. Let's see if there's any public comment on this item. You can raise your hand on Teams or come to the podium.
All right. Seeing none, Mr. Cockrell, will you please call the roll on the memorandum of understanding with Indiana Cave Survey, Inc.?
Commissioner Thomas?
Yes.
Commissioner Jones?
Yes.
Commissioner Madeira?
Yes.
Motion is approved, 3 to 0.
Thank you. Next item.
I'd like to move to approve Blue Stone Tree for tree removal for Eagleson Bridge 922 replacement. Fund name cumulative bridge, fund number 1135, in the amount of $15,300.
I will second that. Ms. Ridge?
So we've reached out to three tree removal services. We've received a quote from Blue Stone Tree Service. The work is actually going to be performed tomorrow during IU Fall Break, and the letting for this bridge project goes to letting January 14th.
Thank you so much. Comments or questions, Commissioner Madeira?
Nope. This sounds like an essential project, done it at essential time.
Commissioner Jones?
No, I don't.
All right. I don't have any questions either. Any public comment on this item? You can raise your hand on Teams or come to the podium. All right. Seeing none, Mr. Cockrell, will you please call the roll on the Blue Stone Tree contract for the Eagleson Bridge 922 replacement?
Commissioner Thomas?
Yes.
Commissioner Jones?
Yes.
Commissioner Madeira?
Yes.
Motion is approved, 3 to 0.
Thank you. Next item.
I'd like to move approval for HNTB Assignment Number 2, Post-Construction Attention Basin Maintenance Assessment. Fund name Stormwater, fund number 1197, in an amount not to exceed $28,500.
I will second that. Ms. Ridge?
So this was also taken to the Stormwater Board on October 1st, and it was approved. Basically, it's coming up with a plan for maintenance for these two detention basins, which are located on county property. We want to make sure that those are brought up to county standards, just as we have other property owners, too.
Yeah, sounds good. Comments or questions, Commissioner Jones?
Yeah, this certainly makes sense. Thank you.
Commissioner... Commissioner Madira?
No, I remember discussing this at the Stormwater Management Board, and again, it made perfect sense. Thank you.
Appreciate you bringing this forward. It's a good idea to have this done. It does not involve any work or construction, it's just an assessment, so...
Yes.
All right, let's see if there's any public comment on this item. You can raise your hand on Teams or come to the podium. All right, seeing none, Mr. Cockrell, will you please call the role on the HNTB Assignment Number 2 Post-Construction Detention Basin Maintenance Assessment?
Commissioner Thomas?
Yes.
Commissioner Jones?
Yes.
Commissioner Madira?
Yes.
Motion is approved, three to zero.
All right, thank you so much. We don't have any appointments today, and I do want to make note that our next meeting is going to be on Thursday, October 23rd, so we are not, we are not meeting next week. I am wearing my Hoosier Hills Hunger Action Month shirt, because the book sale is coming up, and it's before we meet again. So, at Monroe County Fairgrounds, beginning October 16th, over 100,000 items for sale, which is awesome. And it runs through Tuesday, October 21st, so lots of folks in the community have donated books and DVDs and collectibles and all kinds of cool things, and all of the proceeds will benefit the Hoosier Hills Food Bank. And I'll just note that the first day of the event, which is always a hot commodity, admission is $10, and the first day starts at 9:00 AM, but veterans will get in for free, which is nice.
Wow, awesome.
Yeah, so it'll be a great event, I probably will be there helping out, and really excited for Hoosier Hills Food Bank. This is a really good time for the community to support the food bank. They really, really need it, so. Just a reminder to residents, they can sign up for the Resident Alert System to be notified of health, weather, other emergencies, and this is available on our homepage, at our new homepage, at IN.gov/county/Monroe. We are also accepting applications for all Boards and Commissions. Go to that homepage and run a search, and you can find out more information. The Boards and Commission member list and expirations are not quite updated yet, they're in progress. So if you see a Board or Commission that interests you, you should just apply. And if we don't have an opening for that, maybe there's something else we can suggest. We also host office hours, six hours each month, just go to the calendar on that homepage. And a note as well, that we continue to support and co-sponsor the blood drive at IV Tech, thanks IV Tech for all of your help on this. Today, from 1:00 to 6:00, Friday, October 10th, from 10:00 AM to 3:00, and that is at IV Tech, Room C130A and B. You can go to RedCross.org to make an appointment. If you just show up, I'm sure they will find a way to help you out, to help out our community. So it's a great thing. Any other announcements for good of the order? Commissioner Jones, nothing? Okay. We do have a work session item, it is 10:40. I wonder if we could come back at 11:00 for that, if that's okay with everyone? Okay, all right. So our regular session is adjourned. Thanks, everyone.